Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. I got fourteen, fifteen, Captain May. I want to say Sam Wilk in that balcony. There's number sixteen. That's Stephen. Is that Mr. Whittaker? I need to go pay. Ready? Mr. Buckmaster, we have our invitation, please.
Lord, for your goodness and guidance in your work business and the county's saving. Lord, we pray that when you have, we have entrances with the presence of dignity and respect, Lord. We have to provide help for our persons in the military, but they protect us for that which the farmers. Lord, we pray to grant peace to those who have lost loved ones in the past year. Lord, if you take care of those who are sick and having events that were experienced. Lord, we have to bring this country back together. Lord, if we all give praise to him as long as he has his business. Do you think you pray to these saints?
Amen. Ms. Sam Wilk, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of witness stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and never be without its problems.
Please proceed. We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Appreciate you trying to abide by the COVID rules, wear your mask, social distance as much as possible. I believe in this large room, we can all do that safely if we try to do that. I think we're all a little warm and some of us are running a little bit with our tongue out. The power went off about six o'clock all in downtown. And I was scrambling whether or not to call the meeting off, try to text everyone, call everyone. And went down and talked to Tri County and told them what was going on. And they said, I'll have you up in fifteen minutes. The time I drove from over there down here, the lights came on. So, thank you, Tri County, just want to say that. Ms. Rita, would you call the roll, please? Thank you, Rita. First item of business tonight would be the approval of the minutes from the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty commission meeting. They've been distributed. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to those minutes? Mr. Harsh? We have motion to approve in a second by Mr. Walsh. Motion by Mr. Harsh, second by Mr. Walsh to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is done. Have a few announcements. Time sheets, please get those in for last month, this month's meeting, if you would, to Amy as soon as possible. The statement of interest form for the state of Tennessee elections is due January thirty-first. If you haven't done that yet, you can do it online or you can print out the form and mail it in. You need help with it, Amy, I'd be glad to help you with it. Let's see. We sent out the new committee sheets with chairman and secretaries and things. If there are any errors, I think we found a few that we left the secretary off or something. Please let Amy know and we'll correct those and get a corrected sheet out to everybody next month. Also, I'd like for us to remember Commissioner Richard Johnson. He has been in the hospital a good while. He's in rehab in Lebanon right now. He's having some issues with his leg and some other issues. Seems like one day he's doing better, the next day he's doing worse, but try to remember him. He's got his cell phone. If you want to pick it up and give him a call, he likes to talk on the phone. So, I wouldn't be afraid to give him a call and encourage him. He said for me to please tell everybody that he's gonna be back, he's gonna be back. So, I did tell you, I promised him I would do that. Also, Rachel Jackson has COVID, if you remember Rachel in your prayers. Not sure about Mr. Taylor, if he sent me anything, said he couldn't be here tonight. Oh. That's right, I forgot about that, yes. Thank you, thank you. Are there any other announcements, Commissioner? All right. We'll move on into the agenda, approval of the agenda. I don't have any amendments to it. I do have three notaries that we will add when we get to that section that we just got in. Any additions to the agenda? Take a motion to accept it. Mr. Ford makes a motion to accept it. Ms. Johnson makes a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, our agenda is set. First thing, citizens' response to the agenda items. If you're in the audience and you have anything that you would like to speak to on our agenda, we would like for you to sign in, come up to the front here, the mayor has a list, and sign in. And that way we can call on you at the proper time when we get to that agenda item. Don't want to miss anyone, anyone that wants to speak, please, you have an opportunity to. If it concerns you, of course, we will recognize you without you being on the list. But if it's just someone in the public that would like to address something. Chris, you know what it is? Who's car? It's Mary Ann, okay. Mayor, I guess you're up.
I don't have much to report on this month. Try to get in the camera, Amy, right here. As I mentioned at the work session, the administration building has reopened due to a decrease in COVID cases. Governor Lee's order prohibiting social gatherings over ten or more also expired last week, so that restriction has gone away. Our current COVID numbers, we did hit a high twice of a hundred and eight, once in December and again on January eleventh. But as of today, we have thirty-four active cases, but we have had up to seventeen deaths. Now, we've had a few here this week get added to our rolls. So, we are going in a positive direction as far as active cases. And unfortunately, we're going in a negative direction as far as fatality. So, extend our condolences to all the families who have been affected by COVID-nineteen. Hope there are no more that have to face the death of a family member due to this pandemic. However, as I said, we are going in a good direction as far as active cases and we are, the vaccinations are going out. That's kind of dependent upon the vaccination numbers we get, is dependent upon factors at the time. The state is currently constantly redoing the numbers and trying to make sure they get the vaccines where it's needed most. So, sometimes we'll get more and sometimes we'll get less, but it's always changing based on the number they get from the federal government and how much the numbers are in the different communities. And a lot of other members I was going to talk about are actually agenda items tonight, so I'll just address those when those come up. Does anyone have any questions about what I've talked about? Yes, sir. Right now, the state's getting about eighty thousand dollars, I mean eighty thousand a month, I mean week. That goes up and down depending on what comes from the federal government. So, that's eighty thousand spread across, what, six million people? And they have a very in-depth matrix of how they send it out, where it goes. It's based on population numbers, case numbers, a lot of different factors. So, it varies, if you look at it almost day to day, it'll vary as to who's getting the vaccines. But I know we've received, I think, six hundred and seventy-one vaccinations. And as of the twenty-first, they have administered five hundred and thirty-eight. So, I think they administered about thirty last Thursday, and that's the last day I have numbers for. So, we are still getting the vaccine, it just depends on, like I said, those numbers, once we get them from the federal government and the state distributes them.
Any other questions of the mayor? Seeing none, we'll move on into the committee reports. Steering committee met January the fifth at six o'clock. We conducted this meeting online as well as made an option for people to attend in person at the courtroom. And appreciate the mayor and all his efforts to try to set up the equipment so that we were able to do that that way. The minutes from the November fifth meeting were approved. The courthouse windows are still working with the historical siding building committee. Same thing with the historical planner, GNRC is without one right now, I think. Anything to add on that one?
No, sir, that position was eliminated due to budget cuts, due to grants and stuff going away. So, right now, I've tried to cobble something together based on the other states. But I spoke to Mr. Harsh before the committee meeting tonight. I'm also looking at just RFPs for the windows themselves instead of having to do a full-blown historical structure report. Just trying to find an RFP to deal with the windows themselves.
Okay. The wage study, we have that on as an agenda item as far as budget. Talk about that a little later. We did talk about that, send it on to the full commission. The budget amendments, we've been over all of those and decided to send them on to the full body. There's a resolution, twenty-twenty-one oh one seven oh five, extended vacation time for jail guards at the sheriff's request. We felt like that did not need to go through any committees, it just needed to come on to the full body for a vote. So, it's on your agenda tonight. We had several rezoning ordinances and they're on your agenda tonight. We talked about virtual meetings and how long we would have to have them. And we were hoping that by the end of the month, we'd be able to meet back in person. Certainly, any of the committee chairman that wants to meet by Zoom, if you want to continue to meet by Zoom, that's okay, I think. Is it not?
Yes, I believe that that goes through March, I believe is when the governor extended it to.
But it's present time, it would be.
Yeah, it's active now through, I think somewhere around, towards the end of March.
That's about it in the steering committee. Economic development, Mr. Harsh?
We met on January the seventh, and we also had a virtual conference meeting. The mayor updated the committee on Tennessee downtown grant funding through economic development to help downtown businesses through a grant reimbursement program. Part of the guidelines for funding is for a five oh one C-three to serve as the bookkeeping entity for the project. Not having found one, the county can step in and act in that bookkeeping function. The mayor asked for the committee to approve five thousand from the committee's budget to help with this endeavor. And a motion was made and passed to do so. Then Mr. King gave an update on events that have happened recently with the industrial development board that affected the economic committee, development committee. He updated the retail strategies out of Birmingham, Alabama, had been retained to help the county over a three-year period to help bring in retail operations, so money is kept in this county. He asked that the economic development committee to be thinking about an update to their hotel feasibility study and a new residential study that would complement the work that would be done by the retail strategies. This will be reconsidered when the time becomes relevant. The committee took steps to make the Hartsford-Trouseville County Chamber of Commerce the official tourist organization for the county. Although this has been the case in the past, as noted by Ms. Knutson, this step will make it official. The chamber board of directors passed a resolution to their December meeting agreeing to be the official tourist organization. If approved by the Trousville County Commission, a motion was made and that we recommend this to the county commission. And that motion, that motion passed, make it designated as the official tourist organization. Then in other business, the mayor announced that the DTC had been in discussions to bring broadband to the Providence community. That would cover an area of the county that is not served by Tri County electric broadband service. So, that would be really good. And that's the report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harsh, very thorough. Mr. Ferguson, personnel, January seventh?
Yes, uh, oh, that's loud. The mayor handed me the mic here. We had a meeting on January the seventh to talk about a variety of topics. One of the topics we discussed, the mayor had some things before him as it relates to COVID-nineteen. And as the committee met, the mayor explained what the policy was like. So, I'd like for the mayor at this time, he's kind of been fully involved in this, if he would like to explain to the commission some of the details that are associated with some of the things that we had discussed on the seventh.
Yes, sir. Up until midnight of January first, we were operating under a family's first coronavirus relief act, which also had an emergency paid leave act provision that was mandatory for state and local governments and employers, I think, under five hundred employees. As I said, that expired at midnight on January first, which left us without any kind of COVID leave. Due to the uniqueness of the pandemic and given that some employee can be out for an extended period of time just if they're completing the quarantine period, we tried to adapt some provisions to provide for a COVID sick leave for our employees. This is not a, like a sick leave, earned sick leave, like our normal sick leave is. It is only if you meet these qualifications to get this COVID sick leave. We made it for ten working days, that makes it work with our FMLA policy. If you are out for ten days and if you have to be out further because of the hospitalization or you're still experiencing symptoms and your doctor wants you to continue quarantining or isolating, then you can then move on to FMLA, so there should be a seamless transition there. And since it's a workday, it'll cover whatever hours the employee is normally scheduled for so that the sheriff's department's hours would be covered and EMS hours would be covered as they're normally worked. We do have some documentation requirements for the employee to get it. They have to submit those through their department head. The leave has to be required, has to be requested from their department head and their department head is supposed to turn in the form with their time sheets to make sure we get that accounted for once we do our payroll. That's pretty much mainly it as far as it goes. This will not carry over, so like I said, it's not an earned sick leave. It won't carry over beyond December thirty-first next year. Can't be used to calculate days for the Tennessee consolidated retirement system or anything like that. It is just to cover our employees if they are diagnosed with COVID or someone in their house is diagnosed with COVID and they are ordered to quarantine. Are there any questions on the policy?
So, if there's no questions on that, one of the other topics we had in our meeting revolves around a wage study. And the mayor had gone out to determine who might be best suited in this area to do a wage study on behalf of the county here. And mayor, if you'd like to talk about what your findings indicated there?
Yes, sir, we reached out to three different consultants for the wage study. One of them was, actually, two of them were recommended by C-TAS and M-TAS. And one of them had worked with Mid Cumberland Human Resources Agency, which I'm a member of the board of. We got all three proposals, looked at those. The one that seemed was more responsive than the rest was a gentleman named Steve Thompson from Barris Thompson and Associates. He was very responsive to our questions and requests for a proposal. The other gentleman that came down to the two finalists is also very highly recommended, however, he was not nearly as responsive as Mr. Thompson was. Brought this to the personnel committee, explained why I felt Mr. Thompson was the best choice to go with this, even though he has a little bit more expenses, roughly about two thousand and something dollars more expensive. And that's just down to, one of the things we asked was him to include if he did job descriptions, but some of our job descriptions were done on typewriter. So, we want to update our job descriptions and not all of our positions have job descriptions. So, to properly classify our employees for terms of doing wage study, we have to have these job descriptions and make sure we've got that accurate as we can get it. So, we recommended, I recommended Mr. Thompson and the personnel committee did vote to retain Barris Thompson and Associates. There is a budget amendment that goes along with this. I asked for twenty thousand dollars just to go over a little bit in case there's some expenditures that weren't foreseeable. I think he had quoted eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. But that is, again, if there's some unforeseen expenditures in there, I'd like to have a little bit of padding that's normally how a bureau budgeting, try to overestimate expenditures and get any coverage in case something goes wrong. I can answer any further questions on that. I will follow up on a question, I believe Mr. Gully asked about, do they take into account the insurance? They actually do, it was on one line of the proposal that I didn't remember reading, says employee benefits review. And we actually got the paperwork, the request for information from Smith County, where he's apparently doing the wage study from Smith County. And it asked for how much we contribute to employee insurance and a bunch of other questionnaires on it. So, they do take that into account where they're doing the wage study.
The other topic that we had a lot of discussion about in our meeting related to direct deposit, and I think in that particular discussion, the committee was looking for the executive branch to come up with some ideas. And then the executive branch said, well, yes, as a matter of fact, back in two thousand and fifteen, there was a resolution that was passed by the commission at that point to allow the mayor to come up with something. And that's where we are, there's a lot of thought about going to a direct deposit instead of the way we do it right now. The difficulty that exists with that is that the way that we are currently paying the employees and the amount, the lack of amount of time that the person works to the day that they get paid. So, we're trying to plan something, the committee would like to do it. I think a lot of people in the room would like to do it, would like to do that. It's just trying to, they want to accommodate for the best.
Mr. Ferguson, if you could move it a little bit further away from your mouth, it has a basically a spike permission down there, it's cutting it off.
Okay, there we go. So, as we looked at it as a committee, we also discussed some ways that we might implement that. The mayor had mentioned that as soon as it probably could be done was July the first of this year. That had something to do with the budgetary items. We voted as a committee to recommend that we come up with that plan and try to move forward with it. I have later had some discussions with Chairman Jewell about that there might be a possibility of an earlier date that we might look at, that might implement this structured plan to where it might alleviate some of the difficulties associated with how they're paid. We haven't really ironed that out yet, but we've had some further discussions since that meeting just to kick that idea around. And then there was a discussion that maybe a bonus could be paid to the employees to cushion the blow above and beyond the regular pay. Because as we shift to this plan, and when we do, which I think we will at some point, there will have to be some adjustments made or accommodations for the people that are receiving the pay from the county. They won't receive any less, but it's the timing of when the pay would take place. And there is an area that has some monies in it that we probably could pull from, but I think there needs to be some further discussions on that. So, Mr. Jewell, I'm not going to pin you down for time, but I know we'd had some discussions about that. Might could be implemented a little bit earlier. And it's just my thought, and of course, we had passed to move this forward to do something with this. But I'm wondering if we not, at this point, shouldn't think about doing some discussion within budget and finance because there is a dollar figure with it. And then we might have some discussions as how we might could implement it a little bit earlier. It's just a thought.
Well, I think where we've been on this is waiting for the mayor to develop a plan or give us some idea how best to implement this. The question came as to when, there are some pay periods that might begin on the first day of a calendar month that might make it a little easier to make that transition because of a date on the calendar when it aligns. If not, I think we're looking at trying to do something at the end of this fiscal year, at the end of, at the end of June. But we're still trying to put it together to see what's best. And as soon as we get some idea of the best way to proceed and what it's going to cost, we'll come back to the commission with options. Is that, am I on board with you there, mayor, or did I misspeak on any of that?
I don't know, I wasn't part of those discussions.
No, I mean as far as what we're doing right now, what are you doing right now?
Right now, what we've sent to budget and finances, we were going to do a one-time bonus period because the way this falls, we're going to move from what's called current pay, which means our employees turn in their time sheets on a Wednesday, checks are cut, I sign them on Thursday, they're handed out on Friday. Neither of the financial institutions we're talked to can do a turnaround for direct deposit that quickly. So, we're going to have to move what's called accrued, which means you turn in your time sheet, you get paid for that paid period two weeks later. That's going to create, when we move from current, you're going to pay on a Friday, go down till you get to your, what would have been your next payday. However, now you've switched to accrued, which means that paid period won't be for two more weeks. There's going to be four weeks right there where they don't get paid. So, we were going to put in place a bonus period to carry them through. That's where I think the discussion really kind of, how are we going to do that? When is that going to be timed, those kind of things. But we talked to C-TAS about it, that's the only way they could see moving to it. I talked to the wire department, when they did it, that's how they did it. They did a bonus period till they switched to the accrued. And both banks we talked to to process that payment can only do it on an accrued basis, they can't do it current. So, we're going to have to move to that system when we do direct deposit.
So, do we have a target date on that?
The mayor's office target date was the beginning of the next fiscal year. However, there's a way we can do it to lessen some of the expense, we'll certainly look at it. But what we had all looked at was beginning the next fiscal year and possibly using some of this seven hundred and thirty-plus thousand dollars we got from the state to make that switch over. Because that would have been one of the valid expenses, even when they were looking at it initially, that would have been one of the valid expenses with the switch to a new pay system to make sure you can pay your employees if they're not in, if they're not at work.
Right, that's one thing that we can use the COVID funds from the state. Or we thought it would be a good time, and that we're not having to pull money out of the budget per se to try to fund that. So, that was, that's the direction we're going right now, is just trying to work out all the details. Once we have a plan that's workable, then we'll come back and, you know, and let y'all know where we're at with it. But there's still some loose ends to be tied up. Commissioner Gully?
I believe the current estimate we have is a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars once we did the fifty cent pay raise last year, went from about ninety-one to a hundred and thirty-two.
So, what I didn't want to have happen is for us to wait until July the first, and there was no other option. If there's any other discussion that might help us out in such a way where we might not have, I mean, even though it's, some of it's funded by COVID, I think we need to have some discussions in budget and finance, we really get an understanding. And is there possibly another date? I just don't want to wait till the end and all of a sudden, well, you don't have an option, that's what you're going to have to do.
Right.
You won't be able to wait to the end, because if it even is going to be in the next fiscal year, we're working on the budget right now. And there are statutory requirements we have to meet now to have it passed and in place well before July first. So, it will not be a last-minute thing, it can't be.
So, we'll be able to do that then, yeah, okay.
Okay, you threw the report. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, thank you, mayor. Next, purchasing, Mr. Ford?
Yes, last Tuesday night, which was the nineteenth, about thirty purchases and oversat did meet. Most of you know that's a quarterly meeting. And we take a list of all the expenditures that's over five thousand. We take a look at them and look at them from this year or the quarter before, even back to the next year to make sure that nothing's getting out of line. Most of the ones we have now. Most of the ones we, we have now, uh, are, uh, where they have them, uh,
On contract.
Yeah, they're on contracts, most of them. We do have a few that's not. There's maybe five, six or seven that's not. One we had on, I remember was, uh, where the sheriff had card had a wreck and, uh, received money back. Uh, another one was, uh, I can't remember what it was. Uh, for the prison, uh, reimbursed us for some autopsies. So everything looked real good, we didn't find any problem with it. And, uh, it is, uh, was taken very well.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Budget finance met January the 19th. We met virtually and by attendance here at the courthouse. Uh, meeting was called ordered six o'clock. We had a motion to hold the meeting virtually due to the COVID-19 panic, pandemic, panic pandemic, pandemic panic. Minutes from the November 16th, 2020 meeting were reviewed and approved. Um, county trustees report and the financial summary through December. Uh, we went over it department by department. We found no anomalies or abnormalities or anything that looked, uh, out of line. Uh, so there was a motion to accept the trustees' report and the financial summary, and it was approved. We had several budget amendments that we sent forward to you tonight that are on your agenda tonight. All of them were sent forward, uh, from the Budget Finance Commission, uh, Committee. And there was some discussion about, uh, whether we would have money to pay on, uh, debt, debt service and, uh, still feel with the uncertainties, uh, that we, we just need to take a look at that. We were going to try to get some figures together before next month's meeting. Hopefully we can take a look at that. There were several items that did pay out at the end of the year already, some smaller things. Uh, there was a motion on the debt service fund to, uh, receive the funds from the school board for the roof project for this year's payment. We have that so that we can disperse it back out. Let's see. There was a question as to whether ads, votes of abstention counted as no votes. And the county attorney, Mr. Beller, explained, uh, that and how it worked. Uh, if you qualify abstention for cause, uh, that's one thing. If you just abstain, then it's considered a no vote and is counted toward the, uh, the vote. I believe that was all that we had on budget and finance. Did I miss anything, anyone that was there? Okay. We'll go into these budget amendments in detail when we get to that on our agenda. Any other committee reports? Yes. Okay. Parks and Rec will meet February 18th. Six o'clock here. Any other committees? February 9th. Okay. That will be here? Okay. Anything else? We will have an education committee this month. I need to get with Dr. Saffield, make sure that we're coordinating our calendars on that one. But I'll let everyone know when we send out the, uh, the agenda. There was several, um, bills that passed pertaining to education at, at the state house this last week. And I'd like to be able to roll with those with the education committee. And any of y'all that would like to come, please feel free to come to that, give you some information. Also, any of you that want information on what bills were passed or what bills are pending or were filed, if you'll ask me, I'll, I'll make you a copy of that, make sure that you get that so you can read all of them, look at them yourself, if, if you're not getting that information from TCSA. All right, we'll move into active business. Uh, first up is appointments. These are all appointments or reappointments. First, we have beer board, a four-year term. Mr. Bobby Joe Lewis, this is a reappointment. Any discussion on that one? Next is Board of Agriculture, two-year term. Frida Cornwall is the farm representative, this is a reappointment. Jerry Ford is our county commissioner, and that is a reappointment. Landon Gully is county commissioner representative, that's a reappointment. Mr. William Beasley is the farm rep, that's a reappointment. That's the four, uh, appointments up for the Board of Agriculture, they're all reappointments. Next is Bor- Board of Zoning Appeals, this is for a four-year term. Mr. Mark D. Harper is a reappointment. Myself is an appointment, I've served now to serve an unfinished term, uh, where someone resigned. Health officer, four-year term, this is Ms. Kathy Atwood, and that is a reappointment. Highway Commission, Mr. Bobby Joe Lewis, a two-year term, that is a reappointment. Planning Commission, Commissioner David Knoller, that's a reappointment for a four-year term. Water Utility Board, Craig Moreland is a reappointment for a four-year term. Put together a scoring committee for the ten, the downtown grant process. The mayor has appointed Jerry Ford, Mr. John Oliver and Mark Presley to that three-member board. Uh, they will be reviewing applications for site improvements, uh, to facade improvements on the downtown area. Also, our TCHS student representative to the commission. Uh, glad to let you know that we have Ethan Bowles. Ethan, do you stand up a minute? Ethan will be our student representative on the commission for the remainder of this year. Uh, Ethan is a junior at the high school, so he would be subject to serve next year, uh, as well, if he so desires. But we may wear him out this year and he may not want to come back, I'm not sure. But Ethan, we'd like to welcome you. Do you like to tell us a little bit about who you are and just introduce yourself a little bit to those that don't know you?
My name is Ethan Bowles and I'm a junior from the high school. And most of you know me or of me, uh, my parents are Martin and Janet Bowles. Um, I, um, I've been a member of the marching band, so maybe you may know me from that. I'm the head drum major this year and I play trumpet in that. Um, I attend, plan to attend in TSU and major in interior design and cosmetology. And hopefully, um, own my own business in both of those. And that's just about, all about me.
Thank you. You can move up closer if you want to. That's the appointments we have for you tonight. Uh, we can take all of these. If anyone would like to pull any out for discussion, please let me know. If not. Okay, Mr. Harsh makes a motion to approve all of them. Mr. Dickey has a second on that motion. All in favor, please say yes. Any opposed, say no. I believe it is done unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have resolutions. First one is Resolution 2021-01705. This is a resolution to extend the allotted vacation time for jail security guard employees of the sheriff's department due to COVID-19. Uh, what has happened because of the staffing during COVID, they weren't able to take their vacation. Uh, they want to take it rather than just being paid for, is that correct, Sheriff? And, uh, we just need, sir? Okay. And so trying to allow that to happen, it's only for the sheriff's department, only because of this reason. And, um, Sheriff, do you need to say anymore to it or does that explain it?
Hopefully, you know, this, this next year, we might not get the bills, but, uh, probably half of my staff was out with COVID and we had several prisoners at it. And we weren't able to take the vacation time at the end of the year like we normally do, but we did get it all in this year, you know, the struggle. But, uh, hopefully this year we'll be able to get it all in. But, you know, I don't know how it's going to pan out, you know, pan out on us.
Thank you. Uh, this only applies through April 30th of this year, that they can take it by April 30th. Um, the reason we're having to do it by resolution is in our personnel policy, that they had to take it by the end of the year. That's why we're doing a resolution to approve this being going forward for, for this purpose. Any questions about this? Have a motion by Mr. Ford to approve, a second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Please say aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Next, we have for your consideration Resolution 2021-02706. This is a resolution amending the Hartsel-Trausville County Personnel Policy to include a sick leave policy specifically for COVID-19 and to restore administrative leave. Uh, this has been worked on, uh, by the mayor's office for some time. I've been with Mr. Beller's approval, he has looked it over. Uh, Mayor, I know you explained it earlier, does anyone have any questions about it?
Does it have a time frame? It's December 31st of this year.
Through the end of this calendar year.
And the administrative leave provisions just puts administrative leave back to where it was before the COVID-19 pandemic. We had changed that on an emergency basis, because we were getting no direction and we knew this was coming. So we did that on an emergency basis to try to provide some form of leave to our employees that were diagnosed with COVID or had a family member that's diagnosed with COVID. So now that we've got this sick leave provision, we're going to put in place, we're going to put administrative leave back to what it was before. So we're just restoring it to what it was at this time last year.
If you've looked this over, it's pretty comprehensive. There are several schedules that have to be filled out, forms, things, so that we do have a record of what's going on. Ms. Baker? Did you make a motion or would you ask a question?
I asked the question.
Question, so we have a motion to approve it by Ms. Baker. I have a second by Mr. Gully. Any further discussion? It's really hard to pick everybody out over this far, so y'all bear with me. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, it does carry. Appreciate all the hard work that went into doing this. And, uh, folks, we have been hit in our midst with COVID quite a bit up at the administration building and some of the departments. So this is, well, much, much needed. Okay, next we have Resolution 2021-03707. This is a resolution to add La Corneille Lane to the official road name list for emergency services identification. There is currently no road there, this is a new road to be built. Don't know whether you can see this, but careers bend, turns and goes down and Lock 6 goes on out. This road will be right at that intersection, north of that intersection. There'll be at least two, possibly three houses on this. This was sent forward from the 911 board. Uh, it has went through committee with a positive recommendation to name this lane. It is our duty, uh, to do the naming of these roads at the request. Any questions on it? Motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Second by Ms. Atwood. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. No, this is just naming this road, not maintaining, just naming. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Does carry. Next is Resolution 2021-04708. Uh, this is a resolution designating the Hartsel-Trausville County Chamber of Commerce as the official tourism organization of the county. I think that was explained earlier. Any questions on it, Ms. Atwood? Have a motion to approve, second by Mr. Harsh. Motion by Ms. Atwood, second by Mr. Harsh. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? It is done. Okay, next is Resolution 2021-05709. This is a resolution to apply for the 2021 Tennessee Community Development Block Grant Program for the water, water utility district. All of our, uh, grant applications have to be accompanied by a resolution from the governing body. That's what this is. We certainly do this a lot. Are there any questions about it or what it's for? Seeing no questions, do I have a motion? Mr. Dickey makes a motion, Mr. Ford has a second to approve, I assume, to approve the, the resolution. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? It is done. Next, I believe that's all the resolutions. Did we get all the resolutions? Okay, now we move into ordinances. First tonight is ordinance 20720-20-22. This is an ordinance to amend Article 4, Section 5.020 of the zoning resolution of Triasville County by rezoning a partial, partial number 011.00, tax map 019K. Group D from R1 to R2. This is a, uh, tract of land that's located on, uh, Halltown Road, just north of Rogers Street. This is moving it from R1 to R2, uh, for further development on that property. I believe we had, this is our, just like to open, have a motion to open a public hearing on this matter. Have a motion by Mr. Gully to open the public hearing. We don't, okay, I'm opening a public hearing. Does anyone like to speak to this motion? Any questions on this motion? Anyone like to speak to this motion? This ordinance? Seeing no one, I'd entertain a motion to approve this ordinance. I'm sorry, have a motion to close the public hearing. It's hot up here. I do have that from Mr. Walsh and a second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say yes. Yes, any opposed, say no. Okay, now I would entertain a motion to approve this ordinance. Mr. Gully makes the motion to approve and Ms. Johnson has a second on it. Any further discussion or questions on this? All right, all in favor, please say yes. Yes, any opposed, say no. Hearing none, it is approved. That was our second reading. Okay, next, it's ordinance 208-2020-23. This is an ordinance to amend the zoning resolution, uh, on a portion, a parcel of 013, tax map 031, A1 to R1. This is to allow one acre lot for development on Highway 231 South. Like to open the public hearings, would anyone like to speak to this matter tonight? Would anyone like to speak to this zoning change? Anyone like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close our public hearing. Have a motion to close. A motion by Mr. Walsh, second by Mr. Ford. All in favor of closing? All in favor of closing the public hearing on this matter, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? It is closed. Next, I need a motion to approve. Mr. Harsh makes a motion to approve this ordinance. Mr. Burton has the second. Any further discussion on it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, it is done. Next, we have ordinance 2029-2020-24. This is an ordinance to amend the zoning resolutions of a partial from C2 to R3. This is partial identified as 02402 and, uh, Group B, 019K tax map. This is a partial, uh, over behind Food Land, right behind the administration building. And, uh, they're wanting to do some, um, residential development on that, on that lot. And, uh, well. Townhome. The preliminary plat that they've given us, preliminary engineering had 24. It's yet to go through the planning commission for their approval, but it does have adequate sewer and water and road entrances. Uh, this is our second reading. Public hearing, anyone else like to speak to it or ask a question about it? Any questions? Have a motion to close the public hearing? Okay. Mr. Clarity makes a motion to close public hearing. Ms. Russell, can you give a second? All in favor, please. What? This is first reading? This one's not.
No, we did this one.
Yeah, this, this is, this is second reading on this one. You're saying it was not in the, our packet or not in the newspaper? Oh. What, what he's saying is it's not. Okay. We can indicate it, it was, it was passed and we'll so indicate that. Sorry, we, that one got by us. Thank you for noticing in time for us to fix it.
Yes, sir.
It's in the amendment, it's been approved, so that's not a question. It's up for second reading. Anyone want to make a ma- motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Dickey? Did we have it?
You already had it.
Was that your motion to close the public hearing? And Mr. Dickey makes a second. Amber Russell made the second. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, we are closing the public hearing. Do I hear a motion as to what to do with this ordinance? Mr. Clarity? We have a motion to approve by Mr. Clarity and a second by Ms. Baker. Any questions about this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. Okay, let's see. Next is the first reading, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, Mr. Potts was not able to be here in person tonight, but I do have him on Zoom. Uh, so if anyone wants to ask a question or anything of Mr. Potts, I would ask that you get a microphone because if you do not, he will not be able to hear you. And, uh, Mr. Potts, if you can hear me, would you unmute yourself and speak so I make sure we have a good volume if you're here in the courtroom?
I've unmuted, can you hear me now?
I believe his mother and father are here to also represent him if need be. Is that, is that correct? Yeah.
Mr. Potts, can you hear me? I think you froze up.
Now, can you hear me?
All right.
Uh, we still can't hear you.
Okay, you must, it's, it's unmuted, uh.
Mr. Potts is in quarantine.
Yeah. My mother.
I know for some reason it shows he's unmuted, but he's not coming through. I don't know why.
We'll see.
Okay.
Let's proceed. Uh, first, first reading tonight on ordinance 2010-2021-01. This is an ordinance to amend the zoning, uh, on a partial from R1 to R2. This is located on Andrews Avenue. It's identified as partial 022.00, tax map 019N. And like I say, this is to take it from R1 to R2. This was looked at at the Planning Commission and their recommendation was to not rezone it because they considered it spot zoning of putting an R2 in the center of an R1, uh, district. The difference between R1 and R2, R2 would allow a duplex because of the size of this lot, it's an oversized lot. Mr. Potts would like to put duplex on this property. So, Sam, did I explain that well? Did I miss anything? Okay. Mr. Harsh? Okay. We do have a motion to approve this on first reading. Now, a second by Mr. Ford. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any others discussion or questions about this? Dave?
Uh, like I said, nobody, um, thankfully, nobody included it since, uh, they were so far in the, there was a duplex, within a hundred feet of it, uh, you know, sixty, off before we had, uh, selling or anything during that time period. Uh, we felt that, uh, we keep it all, stay a home down to there, we keep it all in our homes.
Right now, this is an, um, undeveloped lot. It's a vacant lot. Um, I think anything that's done to it's gonna be a great improvement to the neighborhood and to that. I understand their, um, uh, reasoning on this. I feel like that they're correct in saying, uh, not to approve it, but also I think we're charged to look and see if this, I think the litmus test has always been, it's what they're wanting to do is gonna be a detriment to the neighborhood or is it gonna be a benefit to the neighborhood? So that's, that's kind of the question we have for us tonight. Ms. Johnson? No one signed in to speak against it. I personally have not received any calls other than, uh, the information that was sent out, I think, to everybody. You know, I, I'm reticent because, you know, we need to support our planning commission. They're the ones that know more about these issues than we do, even though we're the ones that ultimately have to make the decision. And, uh, I hate to see us necessarily, uh, go against what their recommendation is, but by the same token, that is what we are to do is to make the ultimate decision. Ms. Baker, your own opinion now, do you like to add anything to that? So the staff comments from our GNRC paid planner was that it was okay to do this. Okay. Ms. Hertz?
Were there any adjust- adjustments to the plans made that we're looking at tonight versus what the plan commission itself saw in their meeting? Have there been any adjustments?
My understanding that they did not have the, the information that was given to us at that meeting. Uh, they knew where it was, you know, what the lot location, but I don't think that they had, and if I'm wrong, correct me, they didn't have the, uh, the picture of what was proposed to be built there or the exact lot dimensions or anything to that nature. They just had the map that showed that R2 in the middle of an R1. Ms. Johnson?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Okay. We do have a motion on the floor. Any other question about this? Mr. Gully? It went to a vote for their recommendation. They don't approve or disapprove. They make a recommendation to us whether to do it or not. Strictly a recommendation, they're strictly a recommending body. Hmm, yeah. But that's the recommendation. Anything else? Mr. Ford?
The reason they turned it down is because it would be called spot zoning.
Right.
But you put the residential right back in residential and you got an oversized lot that looks like crap right now. So I think it'd be a good thing when we pass it, you know, and put a, put a home in there, a duplex in it.
Right.
Not hurting the looks, it's helping.
I mean, typically zoning, you want a zone, you want an area of all the state. You know, this still is going residential and residential, so it's not that far stretch. It's not like approving a commercial endeavor in the middle of a residential zone or a factory building or something of that nature. So it's not without, you know, precedent to be able to do this. All right, we do have a motion on the floor. Mr. Dickey, you have another question?
Yeah. How did it affect the, how would that duplex affect the, the area for when the residential housing and stuff?
I didn't understand your question.
What I'm trying to say, how would it be, uh, effective, uh, how would it affect the area if you put a duplex and you got houses underneath it?
That's, that's something that I couldn't answer. I don't know that anybody could actually answer that. That's very subjective. I think whatever's, but there would be an improvement over a grown up lot. This is, has been for some time, and I'm gonna get in trouble for saying this, a bit of a declining neighborhood. So there is a new house being built right across the street from this. So there are attempts to improve this area in this, I think, is an attempt to improve this area. Ms. Johnson? Yes. Yeah. I, it would look like a house, it's a residential structure. We do have a motion to approve it and a second. Is there any further discussion? This is our first reading. We'll, we'll talk about it, we'll have a public hearing on it next month.
That's what I'm gonna say.
Okay? All right, the motion is to approve this on first reading. All in favor, please, let's raise the right hand if you're in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 13, 14, I believe, is that what you counted? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. 14 in favor? Okay, opposed? Two, three, sorry, couldn't see. Three. It is approved. We'll take it up again next, next month for, uh, second reading and public hearing. Is that it in our ordinances? If so, we'll move on to budget amendments. We can, I will go over these. If you want to pull it out, please let me know. We'll take any of them for a separate vote if you so desire. If not, we would entertain a motion to approve altogether. Which one? The roof project?
No.
Right. Wage study, okay. We'll take it up separately. Any of the others, anyone like to pull out? Okay, when I get down to them, if you want to pull them out for a separate vote, just let me know. First one is budget amendment. BA 101-11R for the animal shelter. This is moving $4,500 of their funds from reserve funds to, uh, heating and air conditioning equipment for the animal shelter. This is simply moving their funds from one line item to another. Any questions, discussion? Okay, next is BA 101-12. This is, uh, request of in the 101 County General Fund, uh, for coroner medical examiner's, uh, services. And this is, uh, appropriating reimbursements, money that has come in from, uh, CoreCivic for, uh, for those autopsies that were performed for them. Any question on that one? Okay. Next is BA 101-13. This, uh, request from the County Election Commission and Administrator of Elections. They had some extra expenses because of COVID. They had to do extra cleaning, PPE supplies, some overtime work for people that were working there, things of this nature. This is an approved expense out of the CARES Act funding to be used for just these type purposes. This is $7,132. Any question on that? Okay, this would be moving money from the CARES Act grant funding to the election commission for those purposes. Next is BA 101-14. This is insurance recovery, uh, where patrol car, uh, had a close encounter with a tree and a deer committed suicide on another one. And, uh, we received $7,421 from the insurance company and we paying out $7,421 for putting in that line item to get these cars fixed. Any questions on that one? Okay. Next, BA 101-15. This is a request by the mayor's office, uh, and the, um, Economic Development Committee to provide $5,000, uh, for matching funds on the Tennessee Downtown Grants, uh, for the downtown grant program. We have to do a match, $5,000 on it. And I think that was explained, it's their facade, each downtown merchant, if you have a building downtown, you can apply to get a grant to fix yours.
Excuse me, Mr. Joel, it is, it's not a, it's not a match. It is 100% county funds up to $15,000. It's just currently our line item in the budget is under the $15,000, so we're asking to add that to it. So when the revenue comes in, we show the proper expenditure level.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Everybody understands. Explain that again. I see question marks, Sam.
When we put the budget together, there's roughly $11,000 plus in the budget right now for this particular lot item. The state is gonna reimburse us up to $15,000, so we are allocating up to the $15,000 to show proper revenue coming in and going to the proper expenditure line item. If we don't do that, we're gonna show $15,000 in revenue, but only $11,000 in expenditure. So it's basically a budget keeping amendment to make sure we show the proper amount in the budget once everything comes in and it's allocated. It's not a, it's not a fund balance draw or anything like that, it's just a proper allocation of revenue coming in to the proper expenditure.
Everybody understands. Clear as mud. Okay. Next, BA 101-16. The rescue squad for DM had some, uh, money left over. They're wanting to use that for some, uh, equipment. They're not expecting to use it for, for DM. They're wanting to, uh, buy some new air packs and various equipment things. Uh, so it's just moving their money from one line item to another. It's not appropriating any new funds. Any question on it? Ain't none. Next is, uh, very similar request. This is BA 101-17. This is on EMA radio equipment. This is on EMA radio equipment. Uh this is from the local government support funding. We're gonna debit it for forty-five thousand dollars to go to EMA for new radios. We're trying to upgrade the radios from analog to digital. It's been several years and uh the state and homeland security is expecting everyone to change over to a digital type system. Any questions? Anyone? Mayor, you need to add to that?
No, sir. That's a good summary of the issue.
Okay. Next is request from the fire, BA one oh one dash eighteen. This is much like the um rescue squad fire department for DM left over forty-three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. They want to move it to purchase fire department equipment. They're planning to purchase air pack so that everyone can have their own personal air pack, which right now with COVID, of course, is very, very important. Uh I think it's also very important for their lives and safety. This is moving money from one line item to another. Any questions on it? Mr. Gully? Yeah, last year, if memory serves, we, we had to add thirty-eight thousand dollars to their budget to be able to meet their for DM. Uh I know it was into thirty thousands. You're, you're correct for that. And uh we went off of that figure so that we wouldn't have to do that again. Uh certainly, we can refuse to do this and the money go back into the budget, then they can make a request and we take it back out of the budget, give it to them, or we can just let them move it from one, one line item to the other.
I wasn't saying that way.
Right, right. And I know that we, we had, we did have um discussions in the budget finance committee on this, that at budget time, that we needed to look at those figures and not just absolutely go with what there was last year. We may need to adjust them again. Okay? Any further questions on that one? Good question. Uh we'll take the next one later. At uh BA one fifty one oh one, this is to amend the one fifty-one debt service budget. This is money received from uh Board of Education. The agreement we had with, they would pay the first payment on the note on the new middle school roof. So they paid that in so that we can pay it back out. And that's taking it in from them and paying it out. Everyone understands. Appreciate them being timely with that. We can entertain a motion to take all of these. We will hold BA one oh one dash nineteen. We'll take it up after these. Mr. Gully? Okay, motion to exclude, uh to approve all except BA one oh one nineteen. Mr. Dick, you make the second. We do have a motion and a second to approve these budget amendments. Any further discussion or questions? Seen none. All in favor? We need a roll call? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. It is done. Next, we'll take up BA one oh one dash nineteen, the wage study. This is a request being made to take twenty thousand dollars out of local government support funding and to use it for a um wage study. This is something we've talked about. We had a lot of discussion with last year at budget time. Uh when it came to giving raises, everybody's wanting to know basically, how do we stand in line with others? What this wage study will do is it will first of all, show a classification of the job and compare that job classification to other counties, surrounding counties that are, are surrounding ones that touches, as well as ones in other parts of the state that are of comparable size as ours. So it'll be about, I believe it's ten, ten counties that they're planning to, to survey. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir. At least ten.
Okay. Do you want to speak to it anymore? Did I explain it pretty good? I think you explained it early on. It's why it was uh eighteen three was the estimate of what it was gonna cost. We didn't want to have to come back and ask for another forty dollars to want to have enough. If it's not spent, it'll go back, right back into the, into the balance, so it shouldn't be an issue. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, basically what this is, is they're gonna come in, send out these survey forms to other counties. It'll have very in-depth job descriptions. Ask them to qual, classify their jobs based on the job description. They'll come in, talk to our department heads and elected officials, create new job descriptions based on the description that the elected official department head gives them for that position. They're also gonna talk to employees and ask them about what they do in that position, what kind of training they have to have, education, interaction with the public, that kind of thing, and then they'll classify jobs that way as well. Then they'll take the information they've got, not only from what they've sent out to other communities, but also I think uh United States Bureau of Labor Statistics and some also through, I believe it's ECD or Department of Labor here on the local level has that information for us as well. And they'll compile all that, use our job descriptions, then put out a pay scale for each job. So it'll be, you'll have up to, I don't know, just throw it out there and say you have fifty different scale positions on this scale for different positions, and each of those fifty levels will have a minimum pay, a medium pay and a maximum pay. So as that uh employee is here and goes through a review process, hopefully it'll be what's according to the personnel policy, it should be a merit review. So if they get, if the department head or elected official thinks they've done a real good job and deserve a raise, they'll move them up to the next step on the scale. It won't come in front of the county commission unless it's in a budget to give them that. It'll be automatically in that scale if they want to move up. If they get a promotion, they'll move to the next highest rung on that, and there'll be a whole new three levels for their pay there. So basically what this will do is give each position in the county government a set out scale, what their pay is gonna be based on the level they're in. So going forward, the only decisions that the county commission should make when it comes to employee pay is whether or not to give them a cost of living adjustment, not raises. That'll be subject to the department head's recommendation, elected officials' recommendation, and then being funded through the budget process.
But right now, our vote is not to decide to do that. Our vote is to fund that study being able to know so that we have some hard numbers, some scientific data to make those decisions if we want to go to a system.
Yes, once, once this is done, the consultant will come in and work with, whether it's budget and finance or the full commission, to see if there's gonna be a recommended increase in pay for however many positions, and then work with the county commission. If you decide you want to go on that route, will it be phased in one year, two years? You want to do it all at once, they'll work with you and advise you on that as we go forward. And then that pay scale we be put into, it's recommend to put it into our personnel policy. That way it's there when we do an overall restructuring of our personnel policy, make sure it's up to date. And so it'll be in there and everybody knows what their pay is. And as I said, the consultant's gonna work with the county commission to determine how it's phased in. Is it gonna be phased in? It's ultimately gonna be up to the county commission to decide if that's the way you want to go based on the information that the report gives you.
Questions? Mr. Dickey?
Yeah. On the pay scale, on the pay scale, would it be dropping like twenty-six steps?
And uh I don't, I don't, I can't tell you exactly how many steps it's gonna be. It's gonna determine on how many positions we have for each department and whatnot. It'll be up to whatever the consultant puts together. I can't tell you what it's gonna be right now. They'll go through the process and then they'll recommend however many steps it is or however many positions, and then pay scales on that. So it's gonna be up to the consultant to make that recommendation, and that'll be put forth to probably the personnel committee and then move from there since if they'll go for the budget finance, if you want to decide to fund that, and then come to the county commission. But that'll be up to the consultant for them to make the recommendations and work with the county commission on how to proceed after that.
Mr. Clarity? Mr. Ford? You'd want to pull separate. Do you have any questions or? Mr. Gully?
I think seven hundred and thirty-four plus.
Thank you. Points well made, well taken. Good point. Mr. Whittaker, I believe you were next. Delaun.
The raise in, in a, in a department, would that be right? Is that what you're saying?
Actually, the rates will be set under this, under this pay scale. It'll be up for the department head or the elected official to say, I'm gonna move, just say Bob, Bob's done a real good job. I'm gonna move him up to the next step on that pay scale. That'll be up to the recommendation of the department head or the elected official based on the pay scale that's been approved by the county commission. Uh the personnel policy requires an annual review and hasn't been done to this step. They can put it in there. Again, it is up to the county commission to determine whether they're gonna fund that request or not. It's not automatic. The elected official department head can't come in and amend the budget. It has to go through county commission for that approval.
I will remind you that what we're voting on tonight is to fund this, to look at it, to get the information we need to make a decision how we want to proceed with this. The issue of whether to give raises and how much and to whom and cost of living is gonna be with us from now on. But this is a way to get us information to make decisions based on hard numbers. Not what I think it should be, not what you think it should be, so that we know what it actually is. That's all this is, the first step. Now, once that study is done and we have that, then we can look at it, tweak it, reject it, go with it. That's a separate decision. But we wanted you to know what that study encompasses and what it's gonna, what the information's gonna be to give us. Not arguing for it or against it, just trying to make sure everyone's understanding. Mr. Ford?
Seven hundred dollars. And that was, this is not a feasibility study. This is a compensation wage study to determine how do we stack up and to our surrounding communities and the lot communities across the state and our compensation to our employees. Are we behind? Are we ahead? I'm, I imagine you're probably gonna see some positions we're way behind and some we might be a little bit ahead of. But until we do this study, we don't know.
Ms. Baker? We have a motion to approve and a second. Unless somebody has a burning question?
I got one.
Okay.
Let me ask you this question. If you had twenty-six steps, right?
I don't know if it's gonna be twenty-six steps. It could be twenty steps. I don't know.
If you, if you get your step in your pay scale, you go to A to B or C, you get a lot of increase in your pay. Now, when people come in, in the, in the, in the employment, that they can't complain because this guy here is getting more than him. You know what I'm talking about?
If they're starting out as a new employee, they'll be at the low end of the range, and then as they work for the county, it'll be up for their department head or elected official to do these annual reviews that are required under personnel policy that haven't been taken place. They'll look at it and say, okay, Bob's been a really good employee this year. I want to move him up to the next step. That'll go in, that'll be a request that goes into the budget process, and then you're gonna have to determine whether you're gonna fund that or not.
I don't think that question is germane to what we're voting on. We have a motion and a second, whether to fund this study or not. Not to enact it, not to fund it other than to have a study to see how our wages in our county stack up to others.
The proposed pay scale will go in front of per, first personnel committee to determine whether it's gonna go forward to budget and finance, look at it that way. Again, nothing right now has been put in place. It's just to go ahead and do the study. It'll ultimately be up to the county commission to determine whether you're gonna adopt the recommendations the, the consultant makes, and the consultant's also gonna work with it, determine how do you want to phase that in? Is it gonna be over a number of years? It's gonna be one year? They'll look at all our, our budget and what we can afford, and then they'll work with us to determine how we're gonna put it in place, even if you're gonna adopt it and put it in place. That'll be something you'll have to determine at the time.
Hey, we do have a motion to approve this and a second. Motion to, and duly seconded. Let's go ahead and vote on this. This is to fund, take eighteen, twenty thousand dollars out of the local government support funding, not out of our fund balance, to fund this study. All in favor, please raise a hand. Got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. I'm showing thirteen. Thirteen, all opposed? One, two, three. Three opposed? Motion does carry. Did we miss one? Did we miss somebody? Oh, I thought he voted no. No, because you're moving it from one line item to another. It's a revenue line item. All these were. It's not a fund balance draw. It is a revenue. It is a move. I mean, we can't take it that way. I don't think it would change outcome, but if you want to request one, you have the right to. Okay? Do a roll call. Since there was some question on the hands raised there, camp didn't come out. Yes? We don't have to do a roll call on any of these. It's my determination, sir, but you, I took it as a motion that you wanted to roll call, and we a quest to your request to do one on this item. It is approved. Um move on to notaries. We have three that came in this week. First is Cecilia Stricker with the, uh, the Board of Education. Um we have a request from Ryan Chasy, Chassy with the National Guard, Pamela Scott with DNS Consultants. Mr. Gully? Have a motion to approve those. Mr. Gregory catches the second. Any question about them? All in favor, please say aye. Okay, we come in our business to the time for public comments. If anyone here with the public would like to comment on anything that we had on our business tonight, we'd like to hear from you. Anyone like to speak to anything? Anyone like to speak? Appreciate everybody's patience and attendance. Mr. Walsh, I'm sorry. Mr. Gregory? Okay. Parks and Rec needs to move to February the eleventh at six o'clock. We'll get that out to, Mr. Gully? Yes, sir. They're not counted? They're absent. Your quorum would be determined by the number that were present and your, you would vote would carry based on that. Get fifteen, eight would rule, seven wouldn't. Have uh, I think I have something from Mr. Walsh. I have a motion to adjourn for Mr. Walsh. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pardon me?